A little bit after seven, so I'd like to call this meeting of the Central Falls School Board to order. And please note attendance Denise. Just a couple of things off the top. This is a work session for the Board to discuss topics tonight, so there won't be any time for public comment. And also, we'd like to add an agenda item under Discussion Items. We're going to add a letter D. Part of the executive session topics tonight was fiscal accounting and reporting. And while the Board believes that's an appropriate executive session item, there's 11 questions we normally ask our business manager, and just in the interest of transparency, we're going to ask 10 of those during regular session. But the last one is personnel-related, so we need to go into executive session for that. So in the interest of transparency, we're going to change most of that to the regular agenda, and then we'll be adjourned to executive session. So, to start with Discussion Items. Linda, District Design Team and Grant Information.
So I'm here to share some information with you on behalf of the District Design Team, and I have additional Design Team members here with me. This is Brittany Zurcher, teaches first grade at Eugene Field. Rena Wagner is one of our special education teachers. And Marie Trager teaches health and math, and whatever they tell her to, at Silverton High School. And she's also currently serving as the president of the local teacher association. So, the Design Team is named that simply because that is the name of the grant that we received. The District received a design grant for this current school year, and the point of the design grant is for you to put together a committee of teachers and administrators to spend the year reading research and collecting feedback and input from your stakeholders. And at the end of the year, you will have designed a grant application for a much bigger and broader grant, which is called the Implementation Grant. So, the Design Team has been meeting over the course of this year, and the grant funds from the design grant have been paying for sub-release time and/or extra duty time for this team to come together. The members of the Design Team you'll see are listed there on the top of your handout. So, a well-rounded team representing elementary, middle school, and high school, representing some specialties. We have Title I teacher, we have teachers with ELL students, we have special education teacher, we have administrative presence representing different levels as well. So, this team has met, and our goal is to complete our grant application by May 12th. That's when we need to have all of our paperwork finalized and submitted to ODE. And the implementation grant, if we were to receive it, would fund us approximately $90 per ADMW. It is a hefty and substantial grant that we are pursuing, so that would be upwards of $350,000 that would be coming our way. So, the opening paragraphs share essentially what we've done with our time thus far. We've been meeting since December. We spent a large, large portion of our time initially in reading and reviewing the latest research. We actually had the opportunity to do some of that research sharing at our preliminary bargaining meeting with the teacher association, and so the bargaining team members got a little bit of a taste of the kinds of things that we've been exploring as a Design Team. That research is specifically focusing on teacher effectiveness, teacher evaluation, professional development, and teacher leadership. So, we have been out in buildings. We have been in every building twice, or if we have not yet been to a building for the second time, that is scheduled to occur within the next week or so. Our presence in those buildings is to be available for teachers to ask questions and get clarification on the work that the Design Team is doing. We have offered two surveys, one online and one paper pencil, for teachers to provide input and feedback back to the Design Team, and then we've used that information, data, and comments back from teachers across the district to continue to inform our work as we are pursuing this implementation grant. So, the restrictions of the implementation grant fall into four categories, and there are four categories that we must address, and you'll see that those are in bold on your handout there. The first is teacher evaluation, and that really is the driver of this ship. You'll know, you're familiar with Senate Bill 290, which required us to adopt a new teacher evaluation system. It also required us to include student learning and growth goals in our evaluation process, so teachers are observed and are provided with feedback and data on professional practices and professional responsibilities, but they also are measured by student growth in their classroom. So, we have spent this year piloting a program. Our current pilot program needs to be modified. It, as it currently stands, does not meet the standards for ODE to become our permanent program. So, we have learned some things throughout the course of this year in our pilot. We've learned some things that we have to do differently based on the standards that ODE is now presenting, but we're learning some things that we want to do differently as well in teacher evaluation. So, we will be using the Danielson Framework for Teaching. You may have heard of that if you've been around here for a while. That actually is the system. A portion of that system is what we used to use, and so there's some familiarity in returning to Danielson. However, I believe that the manner in which we implement that will look and feel different to teachers. Will be a much greater sense of purpose and intentionality in the way we are using that framework to define professional excellence and to really determine what are the concrete characteristics of instruction and student engagement and classroom management and those core components that we want to see in every classroom. So, we will be returning to Danielson for the teacher evaluation system, and that will not be until this coming fall. So, no changes for the remainder of this school year. We'll maintain, we'll stay in the pilot throughout the year. We're not going to switch midstream. Professional development is also a required component of the implementation grant. We, the Design Team is working to implement a system that would use the teacher evaluation system to determine where our needs are in professional development. So, if we are doing a thorough and effective job in evaluating teachers, then that information will help us identify our areas of greatest need. Perhaps the teacher evaluation system is going to show us that student engagement is an area where our teachers need additional professional development. Then we will plan and guide professional development activities to meet that need based on data. So, trying to move away from some of that, we think this would be a good direction to move, we think teachers would like this, we think this might be helpful into much more data-driven. What is the information telling us coming out of the teacher evaluation system? Where are our needs and how are we going to address them? The other sort of new piece with professional development will be an implementation of a professional development committee. So, that will be myself and a group of teachers that can work collaboratively to determine how are we going to prioritize the needs that are surfacing across the district, and in what sort of manner do we want to present that? Do we want to do a menu option where teachers could choose to participate in A, B, or C? But we'll build some flexibility into that, and we'll give teachers an opportunity to help drive that ship as well. The last two areas are career pathways and creative compensation. Career pathways is simply a fancy term for teacher leadership. So, currently, probably the most popular way that teachers advance in some sort of leadership capacity is they go into administration. And we believe that it's good for our best teachers to stay in the classroom. So, are there ways that we can provide avenues for leadership and additional opportunities for teachers to use their professional expertise and still maintain their status as a great teacher in a classroom? So, career pathways, we'll be exploring ways that we can do that. Potentially creating positions of mentor teachers or consulting teachers. If you are an expert in the area of instructional technology, perhaps could you go out and consult with other teachers who have an interest in pursuing that or who have a need in pursuing that? And the creative compensation piece of that is how can we find ways to compensate you for that? Be it an extra prep period, so you want to become an instructional technology coach, and you happen to work at the high school, well, maybe we can give you an extra prep period to do that, and you're released for that period to go out and be in other classrooms at the high school and coach teachers. Or perhaps you're an elementary classroom teacher, and we can't release you necessarily during the day, but we can provide you a sub once a month. Or we can provide you a stipend and invite you to meet with teachers after hours. So, the creative compensation package is just trying to find and identify ways that we can creatively compensate teachers for being willing to share their expertise or serve on additional committees. It's an area in which we're moving very slowly. We have heard loud and clear from our staff that they are not interested in pursuing any sort of merit pay option. They're not looking for increases in salary based on their student achievement, but there was very distinct and definite interest from staff responses on both surveys. I'd be interested in pursuing additional professional opportunities. I'd be interested in coming alongside peers that need support. I'd be interested in pursuing ways that I could be creatively compensated for other things that I do outside my classroom. So, the grant is due very soon. It is a very fast turnaround. We should know before the end of the school year whether we've received the grant, so we will report back to you either at your June or July meeting, sort of the status of that, and then at that point, I'll hopefully be able to give you an update. There are portions of this that the Design Team, and I think the teaching staff as a whole, are interested in pursuing regardless of whether we get the grant or not. So, we'll have to have some of those continued conversations when we have that additional information. Questions?
Yeah, you mentioned earlier about student growth and some measurements around that. Are you looking at as a whole, a whole classroom, or individual growth?
Both. And some of that comes from the stipulations that are written in the guidance from ODE. And the guidance from ODE is coming directly as a result of what they have written in their waiver to apply to the federal government. So, the waiver states that student learning and growth goals, what you may have referred to as SLGGs, must include all or a self-contained subgroup. So, you must either report on all of your students, or you must select, by self-contained subgroup, they would say, all your ELL kids or all your specialized kids. So, you can't say, "I just want to track, and I want to see if, you know, Billy, Sally, and Susie make growth," unless they are a self-contained subgroup. I believe the way we will move forward with writing those goals is we may end up writing tiered goals. So, if you scored, you know, the bottom 25 percentile in the pre-test, then we expect you to make this much growth. If you scored in the 25th to 50th percentile, we expect you to make this much growth. So, probably shying away from any sort of just achievement, you know, 80% of our kids will pass the test. We won't be writing goals like that. We will be writing growth goals. This is where we were on the pre-test, or whatever initial data we have, baseline data, and this is where we want them to be.
I think that addresses my concern.
Yeah.
Then the money trail, $350,000 grant. Is this state money, state money? Where's it coming from?
This is state money. And so, it is an annual application. It is a grant that you can apply for up to three years, but as you get beyond year one, then the additional parameters of the grant require you to determine what measures are sustainable when the grant money's set.
So, really, the money comes from the general school fund then?
Yeah.
It was freed up from the legislative, this is actual legislative action as part of the governor's strategic initiative approach.
Is it additional dollars above, beyond these?
It's not included in the state school fund, Molly. It is separate. It is in addition to the state school fund.
Okay, so it's a separate bucket of money outside of normal.
Yes, that's my understanding.
So, state's part of it, is not holding back money to use this as a grant?
Correct.
That's correct, but it's always a balancing act, isn't it, the legislature, about where the dollars are going to go? All right.
Other questions for Linda? Okay, good stuff. Thank you.
Good job, Linda.
Excited stuff, yeah. Heard more about it. Thank you. The rest of the team. Okay, moving on. Eugene Field, School Public Input Summary.
All right, thanks. Let me, before I turn on the projection machine, let me tell you and for the benefit of the public, Board members, each of you has received, you know, while the survey was shut off about a week ago, a little over a week ago, we continued to receive some public input. And so, you do have a couple of updated documents in front of you. One of them is the actual hard copy survey results, and the other one is the electronic feedback survey results that we received online. So, you do have a couple of updated, not very many additions, but there are a few in there for your reference. The presentation that I have is also one that's, I gave you a hard copy. And I'm going to do a little maneuvering here, and you may have to as well, although it's Tim that's probably going to be right in your eyes, or you too. So, if you guys can move off to the side, you'll be able to see a little bit better. Or you'll be able to follow along with the hard copy as well.
Why don't you bring another chair?
Can you see? I think what I do is all, I'm just moving. And I could just, maybe I can borrow one of those chairs. Thank you.
Figure this out here.
I can provide you some narrative to this as we move along, and you, of course, can read the slides yourself, and you can read it alone in the hard copy. But this agenda item is a result of some conversation that we've received and heard over the last few months. Some people acknowledging you, thanking you for the opportunities for public input. Others have questioned whether there's been sufficient public input related to Eugene Field. And I think, really, even just as importantly, for your reference as a Board, especially on the cusp of making a pretty, taking some pretty significant action related to some recommendations that you've been given about Eugene Field School, it seemed entirely appropriate, at least from my perspective, for you to have a summary of information, at least for the past year. And so, we took a block of time from June 2013 to present, and as you'll see here very quickly, June 2013 was after the, just shortly after the May election, which was defeated related to a bond attempt. And so, with this information, let's just talk through this, and you're welcome to stop me anytime, Board members, and ask if you have any questions related to this information. So, in June and July of 2013, you sought information from the public related, specific to the bond election itself. It was a public engagement that occurred through use of the online process called Thought Stream that was sent out to the community in a variety of methods, including use of the media. From that, you had 184 participants. You had an opportunity to review those results, and the results were literally pages. And if you recall, the basic format of this process, it's putting questions out there, asking the community to respond to those questions, and then once the answers were submitted, thoughts, hence the name Thought Stream, then the thoughts were grouped. The grouped information, themed information, was sent back out to the community again, and not just the 184 participants, but anyone who had contributed to the prioritization of those thoughts, which resulted in quite a bit of, I think, helpful information for you. And so, one of the questions was related to, what are some of the challenges associated with the recent bond attempt? And I put the six bullets that came in at the highest ranking. There were multiple bullets. Some had very few ratings from individuals in the community, others had more. And these are the six that had the highest definition when it came to feedback from the community. So, communication with the community, detailed plans, history of the old high school, lack of community input, high costs, concerns about rural schools. And within each one of those were multiple thoughts to that, if you recall, and I'm certain that with each of you, it's coming back with what some of those specific thoughts may have been. Sorry, that's a little high, but one of those, what are, one of the questions also, what are some examples of key areas you feel need to be focused on regarding the development of our schools? And again, the issue from the 184 participants last June and July who submitted this information to you. And these were the top bulleted items that came from that list. Moving out of Eugene Field, suitable facilities to educate our children, using resources widely, technology infrastructure, building maintenance, developing trust with the people. And I think the interesting correlation here is that there are a number of items, bulleted items here, that while the question is sort of turned over to ask for some of the information that was asked in the first question, what were some of the challenges with the recent bond? You'll see that there are some common themes in the responses here as well. Many of these were, the District has focused with really some pretty decent energy on, take a look at the third from the bottom, lead for a long-term vision. You've been discussing that for the last couple of years. I think the bond election and the results of that helped put some energy behind that, and we're well on our way to completing that vision-mission process for this school district. In October, November, and December of 2013 is when you began the visioning and strategic planning process. As you are well aware, this was quite a comprehensive process and continues to be. It's not finished yet by any means, but we hope to by middle of summer. That involved 13 focus groups. Each of those focus groups ranged in size from a half dozen or so to as many as 20 in one of the groups. Three community forums distributed geographically within the school district, representation of multiple groups across the district, use of the local newspapers to publicize, and sent to all district residents through the class notes publication that we send out a number of times each year. Over 200 participants were active within the visioning and strategic planning process. Questions asked and input obtained for around the following topics. You can see them there. Again, similar themes is what you saw in the post-bond engagement that we did in June. District communications, top priorities for the district, building safety, strategies for high-quality education, and centralized decision-making. Many of those were themes that you specifically asked for additional information and additional public input. While there isn't one bullet that specifically says Eugene Field School, I do recall the conversation at the time was very clear. Facility planning in Eugene Field School was central to that conversation. So, from the vision session summary that you received in, sorry, December, or I must say January, what needs immediate attention? And this is an excerpt from that summary. When asked to consider top priorities for the district moving forward, nearly every focus group, remember, there were 13, nearly every focus group talked about the importance of addressing Eugene Field School and other facility upgrades. Additional information, there was also perception by some that there is not enough space at some district schools, so participants talked at school bond and what it was intended to do and how it was communicated. Again, some common themes that were coming from now, a second form of public input that you asked for and have received. This was under the building and safety segment of that summary that was distributed and shared with you. While a new, simpler, and more specifically targeted bond levy was encouraged by the majority of participants, there was overwhelming agreement that the District needs to clearly prioritize facility needs and take immediate action on the highest priorities. And I think the consultants who were charged with doing this summary for you with that last comment were very clear. In fact, I remember Jim Mabbe telling you was very clear in saying, "Whatever the decision is, make the decision. Make it informed, do your homework, but make an informed decision because immediate action is necessary." And again, that came from a large portion of the people submitting information. There was also a topic from that, those focus groups and community forums on school bond. You can read this yourself, but they felt like the previous bond was trying to do too much. Again, we've heard that, we've experienced that, you've discussed that, and other information there related specifically to the bond. I want to focus your attention on the middle sentence, "So, several participants expressed support for another bond that is limited in scope and crystal clear in intention." And so, some of that conversation to this point has been, and a little limited in scope, and I know this is also not just speaking about scope, but actually amount for the bond, which was also heard by some of the folks that gave you information right after the bond attempt. But crystal clear in intention means, give it a focus, communicate that focus, and be crystal clear in what the outcomes are going to be. Concerns of recent bond communications stated there would be no increase in property taxes. However, some individual property owner taxes did increase due to increased assessed values. And again, you've received some feedback from others via email and in a public forum on that as well. Also, in October, November, December 2013, as part of the visioning and strategic planning process, we again used the Thought Stream software for this to engage parents and staff members. At the time, we believed that this would be a good approach to be able to sort out what parents of current school district's children feel and what current staff members feel. In this engagement process, there were over 2,800 thoughts. You can substitute the word thoughts for comments if you like. Submitted, 600 people participated in the first phase, 700 people participated in the second phase, with results compiled for each school in the district. And all of those results were shared with each of the school principals and have been shared with you as well. Here are some of the questions that were asked. What are some creative suggestions for things we can do in our schools to improve? Examples of key things you appreciate or think are working well? Examples of things you'd like students to be able to experience that they currently cannot? Again, this was a multi-page summary document, but inputs submitted related curriculum instruction, security, addressing facility needs, and a few schools discussed or shared the need for including facilities specific to Eugene Field School. In March and April of 2014, Eugene Field School Task Force Recommendation Survey was mailed to each resident in the district. About 6,500 of those mailings went out. There was also an online access, an opportunity to submit via email and fax. Hard copies were also placed at the senior center at Roth's and at Safeway to be certain that we at least found three major hubs within the community, so if people saw them, they would get an additional opportunity to participate if they chose. To this point, approximately 275 are returned, and I think as of today, that's more like 285 or 290 have been returned. And as you are well aware, Board members, many of you have received additional comments via email, some on a daily basis, letters, phone calls, and of course, testimony at board meetings. So, total thoughts, comments, or other individual input about Eugene Field and all schools actually received between June 2013 and April 2014, literally 2,800 individual pieces of information that have been submitted to you as a Board. So, to put that in perspective, when you think of the total electorate for this school district, which is around 10,000 people, more than 25%, potentially, I'm certain there are some replicates in here, but a reflective amount of 2,800, statistically speaking, is quite a large representation of any group when you're talking about that many, that 2,800 out of potentially 10,000. Some of those were replicates, some of those may have been two or even three comments from one person, so I'm certain that actual number is less, fewer than 2,800 people. Nonetheless, I feel like you have done a commendable job of reaching out to the community, seeking very thoughtful input from community members in a fashion that's sincere and transparent, and I applaud you for that. And I think you are in a very good position, especially based upon now the results that you've received related to the most recent survey, in a very good position to make an informed decision specific to the recommendations of Eugene Field School. So, with that said, that's it for the slideshow. Now, I'll turn this off, and you can address any questions you may have specific to this. Thanks.
Questions for Andy and from anybody? Thank you for this review, Andy. It's kind of, I mean, it's real helpful for me to go back a year and kind of see some of the things we've done and the reminders of all the input we have had.
Sure.
Other questions? Questions? Okay. Moving along then to our third discussion item, the Eugene Field Task Force Recommendations.
Tim, I'm sorry. If, and I'm, you just asked the question, but we didn't put the actual most recent survey on there as a discussion item. Maybe that will come up in this agenda item, but I don't know if you want to ask Board members about that, those results? And I'd be happy to spend a minute or two on those if you like.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Pull this out. It's always good to have a visual.
For the audience member, real quick, these were the results of the recent mailing survey we did.
And we'll make these available online. These truly are as fresh as today. I mean, the results were tabulated very quickly. Thank you, Denise, for all of your help in putting these together. The Board has received hundreds of comments and also some summary information related to the three questions that were asked on the survey. The first question was, "Do you think it's a good option to modify the Slater site for Eugene Field students?" And the selection options were strongly disagree, disagree, not sure, agree, or strongly agree. Second question was, "Do you think it's a good idea to consider a capital construction bond to obtain the bulk of funding for modifications with additional support from property sales grants, district fund revenue, et cetera?" And the third question was, "Do you think a capital construction bond should also include funds for needed maintenance and upgrades to all other district schools?" And if you recall, when we sent you the memo on this, I suggested that when you're reviewing this information, to not just take a look at the hard numbers, even though the numbers, I think, do speak in terms of some valuable information, but just as important are the commonalities within the information that you read. I also asked Denise, when she separated these out, to take the first few pages, or excuse me, take the first portion of the survey. excuse me, take the first portion of the survey, and there's a delineation in there that I'll share with you in just a moment. But just taking a look at the numbers, first of all, a good option to modify the Slater site for Eugene Field School, there's really quite an interesting, almost not quite equal representation of responses there, but thirty-eight strongly agree, forty agree, not sure, twenty-three tenant disagree, and forty-five that strongly disagree. And I think it's interesting to note that some of the disagree and some of the strongly disagree, if you take a look at the comments that were submitted, where they don't want it turned into an elementary school. They see the educational value and the merit to converting the Slater campus into a middle school, let's say a six, seven, eight middle school, which was one of the options you had discussed at your previous work session. If you were to consider that question alone, though, and the volume of comments that you received specific to abandoning Eugene Field, the first six and a half pages made either a reference inferred or literally to discontinued using Eugene Field School when it related to that question. The following page and a half of comments referred to continued use of Eugene Field School in some capacity, either inferred or literally. And then the last about half a dozen pages or so were other comments. We didn't separate those out according to anything other than other comments because some were quite lengthy, but you saw there that there was just an array of comments, again, specific to continued use of Eugene Field or not. There were quite a few references made to use of the Slater campus. Again, if I had to say which landed higher on the level of responses, use of the Slater campus for a middle school or use of the Slater campus for a K-three elementary school, in my mind, the middle school option was by far the more popular idea if you were to choose to use the Slater Street campus. There was quite a bit of interest in here, I thought, related to the comments for some kind of collaborative relationship with the city of Silverton to make the Eugene Field site available for some kind of mutual governmental use, commercial slash city slash school district use of some sort. Many examples related to dog park, downtown parking, possibly a restaurant, some kind of commercialization, small business. Alternative home for Silverton area community aid was mentioned for potentially YMCA. And again, not necessarily specific to the building, but as future utilization of the site. So quite a few very interesting options were submitted in here by a lot of people, and I think, and I think the comments reflect that. There were some references in this document as well to concerns about the level of taxes in our community. There was some concern in here of very specific comments stating no new taxes. There were some comments in here specific to, if you need to raise my taxes, do it in a thoughtful, careful, and limited fashion. I remember one comment in here, something about, you have one shot to do this, because if you don't get it this time, then chances are it's not going to be on the ballot anytime real soon, and that very well could be a truthful statement. So some pretty clever and well thought out ideas from the public, and I think generally speaking, based upon that as well, is that numerous people in here thank you very much for allowing you the opportunity for input, and I think that was well received. Again, that's a quick summary.
Yeah, that was a good summary. Other comments on, I thought there, like Andy said, I thought there were a lot of really good comments, some real interesting ones. I thought there were a lot of really good constructive comments from the public, and I mean, it was real help for me to read through. Other, anybody else?
It was interesting reading all weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was struck by how many people know exactly how much you pay in property taxes. That number burned in their brain. You know? And as reading these, I don't know, has anybody changed their position from the last bond? I mean, I don't, I didn't really read it too much, you know? Has anybody changed their position from the last? That's kind of what I concerned, that everybody is still in the same camp that they were before.
I don't have the answer to that.
No, I know, I don't either. I'm just, you know?
I kind of, I think I kind of got the feeling, and maybe it's from this and then just general public sentiment I've hearing, but I kind of feel like there's more of an understanding of Eugene Field and the problems that are there. I think there's more of an understanding, and I know there were a lot of comments in here about, you know, don't do anything to raise my taxes, but there were also some that were like, you know, use the resources you have, be transparent with your decisions, make wise decisions. If you're going to raise taxes, be thoughtful and as little as possible. So, but I don't, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
I feel like there's more, more energy or more understanding of the digital situation.
No, definitely. People understand that, and they understand, I think, where we're at with the tax, I mean, they, you know, there just seems to be, people understand the buying rate.
Yeah.
You know, we got a lot of that second phase of the high school you have to pay off, and his pensions.
I think there's been more focus on focusing on Eugene Field and not having the broader bond. I think that's, I've heard feedback that that seems to be helpful. And then the other part in reading it, which I thought was very helpful in just to kind of get perspective of where people are, is there was a lot of people that were really interested in moving it to Robert Frost, and that was something I wasn't quite as, it was great to get the feedback, and I think there was quite a bit of information of that. So that was good, because, I mean, ideally, I don't think it's great for middle, I mean, for grade school, but it's Slater Street, but at the same time, you know, I thought that was the only way that people really wanted it, so it was good to have the extra information.
There's several comments in here that show, there's a lot of people who don't understand how schools are funded and how projects are funded, and intertwining them between different government agencies when we're all well-defined and not making any crossover. That's just another hurdle we all need to help try to educate as we can.
I found on the same thing Julie that you did, I was surprised to hear that specific comment, and I think that that probably warrants us to really take a strong look and give it that option. But along the lines of what Wally said, I think these specific comments not only reveal people's misunderstanding or lack of understanding around funding, but also just a misunderstanding of a lot of fundamental facts. I mean, things that we can just literally point to as, you know, facts, and I think some people's decision-making here is, you know, kind of based on that foundation of bad facts. So whatever we can continue to do to educate people about the basic facts that they're dealing with so they can make a good decision. And then lastly, I think about the, I thought the survey here was interesting in that, you know, when you combine the strongly disagree with the disagree and tally that, those two columns, and then the agree and strongly disagree and tally those two columns, you really have quite a bit of support for, you know, the first two, and then conversely, the last option, really do you think capital construction should include funds for needed maintenance and upgrades to other district schools, everything flip-flops. I mean, you go from a lot of support to the exact opposite, so.
One other thing that kind of struck me is that people are still confused about us, a little bit about us using the Slater campus, wondering why we're putting kids back in there when we had safety issues with the high schools. And that's something we need to communicate more, is we're not, we've never talked about putting kids back into two-story middle structure.
One comment related to this building itself, and, you know, obviously that person didn't realize the money that was spent to renovate this building.
Yeah, there was comments to move the district office to Eugene Field.
Right. Yeah.
So there's, you know, there's clearly some people that, or some need to communicate or make sure that's communicated, the points for that if we do do something with the Slater. Take a good discussion, anything else on the surveys? Okay, that can lead us right into talking about the task force recommendations. And this will all kind of blend together, but just a couple of my thoughts, you know, based on this last public survey and what Andy went through with all the comments we've had. I, and I know I've always, I've been pushing us to make a decision, and if we decide to go for a bond in November, we're going to have to decide fairly sitting anyway. So I'm, I would like to kind of discuss some of these recommendations on a more specific level tonight, see if we can get to some consensus in some certain areas and possibly vote on some of these things at our main regular session. I think the, I think the public is hungry for a decision on some of this stuff, and I just think it's, I think we need to do that, especially if we're going to vote for a bond in November. So, moving in, so looking at the task force recommendations, the first one, and we talked about, we got somewhat of consensus a couple work sessions ago, but how does everybody feel about the first bullet under the school-based recommendations, just the need to close Eugene Field as a school? And this also says by the, well, just read it, "As a result of limitations related to site size, functionality of systems, safety concerns, and overall inadequacy to appropriately meet instructional needs of students, permanently close Eugene Field by the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year." I just kind of wondered, you know, we've heard a lot of public comment, we've had a lot of time to think about this, where are we at on that one?
I guess I'll start.
You made the first noise.
Okay. I'm in favor of supporting that first recommendation. And I guess, you know, my, where I stand now is that I would be in favor of a new school at either the Slater Street campus, where we talked about a combination of a new and remodel, or potentially Robert Frost. I just don't feel that the remodeling options, while I do believe it could be remodeled, renovated, I still feel like we wouldn't be making a wise investment of a lot of money on that site. I think our money would be better invested in a new site.
Okay, on down the line, Tom?
Yeah, in a perfect world, I'd be, without a doubt, I'd be for closing it, but I mean, I don't know if we really processed the ramifications of the existing bond that we're still paying on. There isn't a lot of stomach for more taxes. And my gut is, you know, I read all these things, I've read all those surveys, and I don't detect where anybody moved their positions. I'm afraid that we're still gonna, you know, the bond's gonna go down, and we're not gonna have the money. I, and that's kind of my primary, you know, and I'm worried that we're going to have the kids in modulars, and I haven't really had, heard much information about what the educational environment is like in modulars. I don't, you know, I'm picturing five hundred kids running around outside between buildings in the rain. You know, I don't know what that would really be like. Where would they, where would they go to exercise that? You know, I assume we would use that Slater Street gym, but those buildings are going to be a long ways away. I don't know if we really thought that through. And it's, so it's, you know, Eugene Field is definitely not the ideal site. There's no way I would choose to put one there if it was there, but I'm just looking at our budget and the ability for our taxpayer to pay this, and I don't know if we're gonna, if we're gonna have the money. I'd like to, I'd like to flesh out some, you know, I know this might be a little unpopular, but I'd like to flesh out, oh, what was it? When Bob, hey, Bob Collins went over, went over Dalky and Pfeiffer's solutions, he came across that, he said they were, you know, he said that ZCS was met to all these standards, but when he was commenting about Dalky's, he didn't say it wouldn't work. You know, he said it would make it, you know, he didn't say that it would, I don't really get the impression that it wouldn't work, and it's not the perfect solution, but, you know, he's referring to it in that, in his, and I wish I would have been on top of things, but, you know, he's got a cost saving just on that item of two-point-nine million dollars, and that's, and you can get something for two-point-nine million dollars left, that's a good thing. I'm curious, I'm not, I'm not sold on this, but I'm curious. When somebody can, you know, I was able to go to my accountant's office, it just happened to me in Salem, I work there, I work there, but now my accountant's in Salem, I asked him about Dalky Construction, and they just raved about it, you know, and nothing bad. And so I can, I'm like, it really got me thinking, because I'm afraid that we're going to get told no, and I, like I said, I'm just, I'm curious more about this. I'd like to give Dalky a scope of work and see what they can come up with.
Actually, the issue, Tom, is we don't have a scope of work.
Yeah.
And I agree with you, Dalky's a top-notch construction company, they've done a lot of work here in town, they've been around for years.
Yeah.
But compare apples to apples, we really need.
Well, where do we get the numbers, not ZCS, BLRB, where did they get their numbers? They gave us some numbers that we're hanging our hats on. Where did they get those numbers from?
Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that was based on the same scope document, they just priced it differently. Is that correct?
The BLRB used the structural evaluation that was provided by ZCS Engineering and also evaluated the, as best as possible at this time, without heavy architectural work, all that costs money.
Yes.
But having a thorough understanding of the programming needs of the building, including special education, ELL, et cetera, having a thorough understanding of the need for full-day kindergarten, site needs, traffic flow, bus transportation, et cetera, used all of that from the ZCS Engineering study in order to come up with the anticipated scope for that.
So it was a different scope, so could it be worth me to work while I use that scope document, have Dalky price that out?
Right, that's what I'm getting at. Yes, yes, thank you for working that out. I mean, because I just, I'm not reading anybody changing their position. People really feel taxed out. I'd like to, I do a lot of readings right now.
Well, you're saying, Tom, I just want to point you back to the numbers there with the chart that we've got on that first page. You know, keep in mind, I think if you just took these folks here, you've got a pretty strong, I'd say overwhelming majority of people here that will vote yes on, now I realize it's a survey, it's probably statistically significant with a hundred and sixty-five spots.
Well, it's self-selected, yeah.
It is self-selected, I agree. So, but, you know, I don't know. So, like you say, it doesn't, nobody in here really says, well, I thought one way and now I think another way.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I, you know, the same, they're the same realm.
I don't think anybody's going to say that. People are going to want to know what the point is and the dollar amount.
Yeah.
And just along those lines, I got, I lost my train of thought. But I'll summarize my thoughts.
Yeah, well, there's that, there's that. I'd like to know what our bond might look like and how we're going to impact, pay that off. What is that? You know, this chart, you know, I really would like to see that and see what that says we're going to do.
Sure. We just go with a dollar amount.
Yeah, oh yeah, I know, I know, but, you know, exactly. I'd like to know more, you know, that fellow from this company, who gave that presentation a long time ago.
Yeah, we actually use Seattle Northwest Securities instead of DA Davidson, but yeah, that's accessible information, and again, part of that is based upon the anticipation of everything's timing, because it's anticipation of a November election. So if we were to give Seattle Northwest Securities a number of assumptions, that information would be given to you in the form of assumptions, because nothing becomes real until a bond is actually passed and until the bonds are sold, but we can put our best assumptions forward at that point.
Yes, just for discussion purposes. You know, but, you know, the comparisons of our district, even looking at the tax rates, even after that high school, even after the first high school bond dropped off, we're still at the upper end of expensive bond, you know, ranking in our neighboring districts. We're still at the high end of two-point-five, higher than a lot of the other.
Yeah, I think we'd have to take a look at current information, though, Tom, because a number of other school districts have had bonds go off as well, and other school districts have had bonds pass, including our neighboring district. And so I think anything that's more than a year old is at this point outdated information.
Absolutely. And is there, could they get us information on what the local city taxes are and what they've in this town compared to neighboring? Because I just, I can't believe all the comments I heard about, and I hear stories from people about how much they're paying taxes in this town. And I just, I'm really afraid that we're trying to tax ourselves into prosperity here.
We can find that much information, they may not be able to access the new fees, approved fee schedule for the city of Silverton.
Yeah.
That's a different story, and of course, that structure will look different in the city of Scotts Mills, as it will into the non-incorporated portions of town.
Yeah, maybe that's not an easy way to get that information, but I just, I'm just thinking, I'm looking at this stuff, it's just, it's lining up the same way as last time, and it is not the optimal solution. The kids at Eugene Field need so much better than that, than what's going on. And we do have to do something. I completely agree with that.
Okay. Anyway, I'm going to be short. I agree with Owen.
I agree with Owen. So.
I agree with Owen too, I think it's time, I think the, um, the situation at Eugene Field has, it's beyond time to do something with that. And the, um, in my mind, the, the problems there go way beyond just the building. I mean, we'd, sure, we could possibly remodel the building, I don't believe we can do it for what, for what, you know, for what the Dalky said, I think that there was, oh, there was a lot of, a lot of line items on the other bullet that were listed as owner, you know, the owner, owner provided. So I just don't, I don't, I, I tend to believe the information we've had in the past from other outfits that have, you know, other reputable outfits that have said that it would cost as much or more to remodel that place than it would to build, to build a new. I believe that more just because I think that's what happens anytime you go to remodel something. But the, the problem with Eugene Field, you know, it's the size of the site, it's the size of the building, it's the location of the building, it's, it just goes way beyond, and I just, I think we gotta do what's in, in the best interest for, for kids.
Oh, yeah.
And, um, whether that's, you know, if we go for a bond in November and it doesn't fail, then we have to have a plan, I think we have to have a plan B in mind, and if that includes putting some modulars over here, then we, I just think we need to get out of that, we need to get out of the building. We heard from the teachers and the parents that they would prefer to be in modulars rather than, rather than in that building. And what, if the teachers are saying that, that's, that's pretty big to me, that's pretty big, so, that's how I feel.
Yeah.
I agree with most of the comments as well, I think we need to move out as soon as we can, and seek a bond in November. Think we need to, with that though, we need to clearly communicate what the issues are with Eugene Field, I think we need to do some cost comparisons to show the public that it is very expensive to, to correctly retrofit Eugene Field, and even if we do that, it still has issues. I think we ought to look at some alternative construction at Slater Street. I know, I noticed, I know there's also some concern about moving the small kids over to Slater versus building something new at Robert Frost. I think maybe we ought to consider as part of this to build it somewhat like a, a middle school, so down the road, maybe we could move middle school kids into there, but I don't think the public can, can fund a new build, a brand-new building at that Robert Frost, or Two Projects, or any of that. Also, I think the timing is good, at some point here with the, with the amount of money the federal government's spending, inflation's gonna have to take off, and that's the only way that federal government can pay for their debts, and that's just gonna end up costing us more down the road. And I also just, I also agree with Tim that if the bond does not pass, we need to be prepared to push, put modulars at Slater. I did, I did do, look at the aerial shot at Slater today, kinda just thinking through some of this stuff and wondering how it all works. We need to come up with a good plan what Slater would look like for these young kids, I think we can fence harbor it off. Play, play field areas, I think we need to figure out tennis courts, I don't know if that would fit in that grand plan, we tear up, tear up some of the asphalt areas. There's gonna be a fair amount of work we need to do throughout the summer to figure out some details.
Details for a while.
What the Slater's, if we, if we go, if we have this, what the Slater's side would actually look like and how it would work.
Julie?
Um, I agree, we need to get out of Eugene Field, technology space, health, safety are all things that you can't just fix by upgrading the building. It'd be nice to, it sounds like Robert Frost is something we really do need to look into. Really concerned about the modules, just because paying twice and moving kids around seems to be kind of over the top, that's just a waste of money in my eyes. I, you know, I do think we still need to get them out, so I think it's important that we get them out, because out of Eugene Field and get a very, very specific plan of where we're going. And just, and that's what I think can sell the bond as well, you know, people wanna know what they're doing next, what, I mean, what's gonna be next, whether that's Robert Frost, whether that's Slater, you know, and what's best for the kids, 'cause right now Eugene Field is not best for the kids.
Just a couple of comments real quick before we move on, it's come up a couple times about, and I know there's been some talk in the community about getting kids out of their ASAP, like the end of this year, and putting some modulars somewhere. My personal opinion is that, you know, and some of the research we've done on modulars, once we do anything here at Slater, it's gonna kick in SDBs from the city. STCs or SCs, whatever they're called.
Do you get more traffic?
It's gonna. And those could be up to a million dollars, so anything we do here at Slater, we're putting modulars on, could be between one and a half and two and a half million dollars. And to me, to try to set up modulars to get, when we don't, when we're trying to pass a bond is money that's not wisely spent. I think if we can pass, you know, if we go for a bond in November, if it passes, we could have kids out, we could have kids in Eugene Field for two more years. If the bond doesn't pass, it could be sooner than that if we decide to go the modular route. So, um, I just think, that's just my opinion, it's not, you know, to spend a couple million dollars for modulars for a couple years isn't, isn't in the best interest, isn't a real wise decision financially, I don't think, so.
Yeah, we need to, we need to lay out how long we, we would plan on having them there if we did that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and it come, and, and those funds would come from general fund.
Yeah, and that's another point, that would, well, and we do have some construction excess tax dollars and things like that, but, but that would waste those funds, and there wouldn't be anything left for any maintenance and projects in those schools that need to be done also, so. That's one of the advantages of going for a bond, if we can get a bond passed, it does free up some, some of those other dollars to do some, like a project of beautiful cafeteria, beautiful, some things like that. So, that's just another side note of the, the cost that it would do to, be to set up modulars somewhere, so.
And kind of a side note with all that is the sale property, you know, that we have.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that came out loud and clear too in the survey.
Yeah, the stuff that we have for sale already.
And that goes directly back into the school district fund.
Yeah, yeah, that's a very good point, Julie.
One thing we haven't discussed, up at Robert Frost, if we'd have to do any traffic, you know.
Traffic impact studies.
So we have to check into that.
Let's move, let's move to that, if we, if everybody's comfortable, let's move to that, that side of it a little bit, the options, the options on, we have, I forgot my sheet, but I see Julie has it. You know, converting Slater to, yeah, converting Slater to a, to a 1-3 was option one. Option two is converting Slater to a 6-7-8, moving Eugene Field add-ins and classrooms at Robert Frost and moving Eugene Field to Robert Frost. So K1, K3 would be at Robert Frost, 4 and 5 would be at Mark Twain with some, you know, some upgrades there. We've got 6, 7, and 8 on the Slater campus, that's option two. Option three was to build a new elementary school at the Robert Frost side. Option four was a steel hammer property, which I just kind of assume nobody's really thinking of that. And then we, also the remodel, I assume, from what I've heard tonight, there's still a little bit of a question about that. Okay, so let's just, let's kind of explore some of those.
But to Tom's point, I think we do need to explore, the public's gonna be interested in what the dollar amounts are, we need to compare scope to scope.
Yeah, it'd be curious, 'cause they, you know, we, one of the things, you know, there's a lot of, you, you read the emails and you hear, wait, it's not misinformation, it's just, you just learn things, you know, more, you learn more, but I don't think that site right now is worth anything essentially. The, the, a bare, a bare land, a bare lot that size in the middle of Eugene Field is worth a lot of money, but the building currently is pretty much a liability.
It'd be worth more without the building.
Right, so to tear it off is almost, costs more than the land worth, it's almost zero.
You're probably right.
And that needs to be loud and clear, you know, oh, just sell the site and help pay it off, that's, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
Probably not, you know.
So let's get people's opinions on these different options. If we do decide, if we do close Eugene Field, what's, what are some ideas? I mean, do we wanna, do we wanna use the Slater side for one or the other, or do we wanna?
I firmly believe it's the lowest-cost option, we're gonna have to do some off-site work, but we've got, a lot of the infrastructure already on site, we can reuse part of the building. It'd be like a major, major renovation, but.
Make yourself clear on using part of the building.
Using newer sections of the building, tearing, okay, tearing the older section down, and then, and then building new within, within that site, connecting everything back together again. It's our big day. But I, I believe it's gonna be the lowest cost, cost option, I think it will probably be incomparable to retrofitting, existing Eugene Field site.
And one of the things we've heard from, we've heard from public surveys is to use our, the resources we already have.
Yeah, and I, I've seen a lot of emails and whatnot, and I agree it's not ideal, but I, I think it's something that we can likely afford, it's, we look at the loss pressure on taxpayers, and we go down the road and make an adjustment sometime in the future.
So you're talking about, your preference would be to make, to use Slater as a K3?
As K3. Also, another thing we didn't mention earlier on, reusing Eugene Field with all-day kindergarten, apparently coming down the, down the pipe, we don't have room on that site.
Yeah, that's very true, yeah. Yeah, if, if you get a bond, I'd be for Slater, if the bond was passed, I'd, I'd go with Slater. I know, um, you know, someone mentioned at one of the meetings, the idea of having the high school kids actually have, you know, people say, oh no, you, you don't want them next to the high school kids. I kinda thought, maybe you do, you know, 'cause some of those high school kids can come down and help and mentor, and quite frankly, maybe you don't want the seventh and eighth graders too close to high school kids and learning all their bad habits after walking back and forth to school. You know, I don't think, you know, I, I just think, I think there's some, there's some benefits there.
My thoughts, I guess, would be just about the same as what Wally said. I, I don't remember offhand what some of the costs related to, in our discussion related to Robert Frost, was, you know, the task force, different times we talked about that. So I guess I'd like to refresh myself a little bit about the issues around Robert Frost, but, said otherwise, my, my thoughts would be pretty much consistent with Wally's as far as using the Slater site for the K3.
I think Slater.
No.
Uh, option two.
Option two, which is Robert Frost's?
No, it's Slater, but 6-7-8, yeah, like the survey.
I guess I would clarify, I mean, I mean, if there's a bond, I'm for option two, but I, I'm still looking at number one pretty hard, 'cause I'm concerned we're not gonna get the bond based on dollar amounts, based on the voters, you know, I want, I like, you know.
Say it again.
Does that make sense? No, sorry, I'm speaking a little fast there. You know, I, I really do wanna, maybe I gotta, uh, I guess, I guess these are all relocation scenarios. So if, if, if it's a relocation scenario, I'm for taking it to Slater.
Eugene Field.
Yeah, Eugene Field to Slater, if it's a relocation scenario, but, but I'm still wanting information about the remodel, just 'cause I, I'm concerned that dollars is a real, a real factor here.
Do you wanna?
No, I, you.
Okay, I guess, um, I could kinda go either way, after reading some of the public comments and some of my own thoughts, I've always thought that Slater would be a better, a better site for junior high than a normal middle school. I think long-term, that makes more sense, educationally, and just, just the way this campus is set up with the access to the ball fields and the gym, I just think it's more suited as a junior high. One of the things that, with option two, one of the things that, that gets taken care of is some of the seismic upgrades at Robert Frost and Mark Twain. I don't think, all, all of the seismic upgrades in Mark Twain by any means, but some of them would get taken care of. And according to Bob Collins' estimates, um, the option to move kids, you know, to Robert Frost, Eugene Field to Robert Frost, 4 and 5 to Mark Twain, and then make Slater a 6-7-8, was about 5 million dollars more than just moving Eugene Field over here. And 5 million dollars is a lot of money, but if we're talking 50 years, it's, it just, I don't know, it kinda makes more sense to me. But I could, you know, I could support moving Eugene Field, so I just think it's, I just think it's a long-term, long-term investment. We need to look down the road a little further than, so.
How do you feel, Tim, about the likelihood of success of being able to get the community behind that offer, I mean, what, what?
Well, I've thought about that, because with, you know, that's what we proposed to do last time, and it didn't fly. But I think, I think it would make sense to a lot of people, I think a lot of people can see the Slater campus more as a junior high, and that, that came out in some of the survey comments. But also I, and I know Tom's talked about the, um, the possibility of passing a bond, I think a lower dollar figure is gonna go a long ways. If we could use some volume, even though we have some costs at Robert Frost and Mark Twain, I think if we can use some volume, some off-site construction here on Slater, we could get that price down to, you know, if we could float an 18, 18, 20 million dollar bond or something like that, we may have success with that. I don't know, it's a risk, it's a risk, and it definitely costs a little more, but I just think in the, you know, maybe that's one thing we need to look at, is how much does 5 million dollars add to the dollars per thousand on a bond, over, over the, over 50 years, you know, you don't pay enough for 50 years.
The thing I get most concerned about on that is just the complexity of it, it's just, seems like we've, one of the messages, and this is oversimplified, but it's just to, you know, have that single focus, and I know that single focus may not be the best, but it may be, it may be what we can get the public behind.
I agree. I think there's a lot of people out there that are, that talk to me, they're very supportive of moving out of Eugene Field, but they have no direct connection with Eugene Field any longer, or, or at one time they may have, maybe they never have, but they understand the issues there, but they expect to keep it simple and understandable, and inexpensive will be as possible.
Well, ideally, I think it would be great if we could go up to Robert Frost for that, but I think, yes, the lowest cost of what we can do to get the kids out of Eugene Field without using modules is probably where you're gonna have the most public support, and that's really important, and that's what we want. And I think it needs to be really, really clear that we're not putting kids back into Slater where it's been condemned, where we closed it down, because I think that was in a lot of the comments, you started saying that you're putting them back into Slater, they're like, well, you told us that was already, you know, no good, and so we have this new high school, and there was a lot of comments that there was some misunderstanding there about putting those kids back. So if we go that route, that has to be continually put out there, that we are not putting those kids back into the unsafe front area that is no longer, you know, to be a school. And that, so that's a big concern with the public mind, is that they think you're putting them back in, and then you told us it was closed.
Yeah. And I know in all these estimates, the demolition of the illness of Slater is included in these, so, but that's something, we just, that's something we have to make sure we communicate, so.
Thanks, Julie, just go and take care of that first right away, and then they can see it's not there, and then it's a bond.
Other thoughts? So, so we have general support that we need to close Eugene Field, we have pretty much agreement that we're gonna, that it's best to use the Slater property, whether that's for Eugene Field or for, or make it into junior high, we're gonna use, since nobody talked about building up at Robert Frost, building a new school up there, does everybody feel that's pretty much cost prohibitive and.
I think in a deal world, that's where, that's where we're built, but I don't think we can afford it.
Tim, if I could change it as well, the, the, the consideration of a, of a new school on a new site would also add some pretty significant delay to, because there's quite a bit of, of site work, and, and not only planning for utilities and things of that sort that all would need to be considered. Keep in mind that from, you know, the, the approval of the bond with phase one of Silverton High School, I could think construction occurred well, Wally, was it, was it three, three and a half years later, even before construction began, and quite a few days, and some of that had to do with property acquisition, but at the same time, there's just much more to the scope of work when you begin a school on a new site as compared to a site that you have fully established with utilities and streets and access and so forth.
So, so given that, we're all gonna use the Slater property for one purpose or another, correct?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Task force recommendations again, what about, what about the part that says close Eugene Field by the, by the 2016, '17 school year? I know that was a topic of discussion.
I think we have to work on the bond because buying the modules, for me, is, it's nice in theory again, but they're costly and they're temporary. And they don't just pick up and move to another school once you're done with them really easily either.
Yeah.
My understanding is that, because there's some confusion again, that, you know, if you buy these modules, you put them down there and you use them, then you can just go ahead and move them to another school really easily. Those are some of the comments as well, that we could disperse them throughout.
And we don't need another school.
You mean, if the bond doesn't pass, then we can put them on.
And then later, and then you got to move them because we can always use them. It doesn't sound like we can always use them, that it's just a temporary fix. That I don't, that I have a hard time with having them. I would like to say, yeah, everybody needs to be out, but I don't think it's, I think we need the money to get them out.
I, I agree. I think if, if the, well, bond does pass or even it doesn't pass, we need to come up with a project timeline, and that's what's going to dictate when we get out of Eugene Field.
And we would, I assume we would be using on these modulars, we would be using them for the, well, I guess until we felt we had money available or the useful life. We'd be, we'd have them, we'd have them there for quite a while.
For Plan B.
For Plan B, if we were modulars, it's not, it's not temporary. It's, it's, there it is for quite a while.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would be thinking about doing the modulars as a Plan B and selling Eugene Field and using that money to help support the purchase of the, installing the modulars and,
Yeah.
you know, with the hope that sometime down the road, the, the community would support.
Permanent.
More permanent.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess I have no problem with the date. I think it's important enough to, to get out of that building to, I mean, we go, we go for a bond, but if a bond doesn't pass, we have to come up with a plan, a plan to still get kids out of that building.
If Plan B, if Plan B is going to modulars, if the bond does not pass, um, this timeline's probably reasonable. Yeah, but if we're going to build a new building, I'm not sure it is.
Yeah, I agree.
Agreed.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
What could we do in the meantime to mitigate, you know, if we get, if we get a bond or don't, but in the, in the next year or so there? You know, you hear about traffic issues. I, I know I suffer from allergies. I mean, I'll get borderline asthma, and I listened very intently the other night when everybody's talking about that. I mean, I've got Zertec and Ventaril everywhere in my place. You know, can we, I was, happened to be talking to Pete Paradise, you know, and he said, you guys have a really nice machine that vacuums once a year in the summer. Can we do that spring break? Can we do that Christmas? What, is there any things we can do to clean that building better? And help, to help out with that? I mean, I'm just assuming from my own experience, because I got the same thing. Sometimes, some buildings set me off and some don't.
You just mean knowing we're going to have kids in there for.
For at least a year or two more. Can we, is there something we can do to help, help, you know, remediate something, to help get by, you know? Because I don't think we're getting them either this summer, so, I mean, just simple things. Could, would, would, is there a cleaning schedule we can upgrade? Can we, can we get some more pylons out there on the street, you know, because I hear talk about, you know, the concern about traffic and school crossing and stuff?
I don't think that alone would help. I think it's.
Yeah.
I mean, the staff has done an incredible job.
Oh, yeah.
To set up, to try to work all that, you know, drop off and all that stuff, and a lot of times people just do what they want to do anyway, so.
Well, yeah, you put, you know, like when you go through construction zones, I mean, I, I just, I've, I've been through a few school zones and they'll have more barriers, and they just put them out there. And it narrows people up and it slows them down.
And did you want to?
Yeah, I can try, I mean, sure, I, I think in, in the big, in the big picture, there are always, there's always something else that we can do. I think if you were to ask any staff member or even administration of the last 20 years of Eugene Field about what it looks like today as compared to what it looked like 20 years ago, you'd probably come up with a list, maybe multiple page lists of things that have occurred, and, and many of them are logistic differences like students load and unload in the church across the street and, and little figurines outside and cooperation with the city with a police presence there to keep the traffic, you know, slowly and 20 mile an hour signs, et cetera. And all those things are there and, and could be added. I think what you're referring to, Tom, in your conversation with Pete, is likely the, the carpeting shampoo or an extractor that's used once a year. Otherwise, we have purchased additional HIPAA vacuum cleaners for Eugene Fields specifically because of the carpeting. We have worked with the staff to help in, in everything from no fragrances to no exposed food items, to no animals. I mean, things that you would typically find, sometimes commonplace in elementary school, are not allowed in Eugene Field schools simply because of the concern for air quality down there. And so, bottom line to your question, sure, we could probably come up with some additional things, but in my mind, there, there are so many practices in place right now that you would not find at a Victor Point or a Scotts Mills or a Silver Crest or other places, simply because it's Eugene Field.
Okay.
Maybe a big auxiliary water tank for the bathrooms?
Yeah.
Okay, what's, what, um, moving down to the recommendations a little bit, what, what are the feelings about going for a bond in November?
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
I'm as well. We've got a lot to do though to work out the details, because the surveys, the public's been very clear, they want specifics, and to do that's going to take, take some time.
Yeah, I'm in favor to do something. You know, hopefully, hopefully we can find a more cost-effective way to do it and something that, that, you know, some very tax-concerned people will swallow and will yes on this time. So yes, I'm in favor of that.
I also think we need to be asking for a few dollars for safety, safety and security improvements at the sites as well, at the other schools as well.
And possibly some technology.
Possibly some technology.
Yeah.
Yes.
One thing related to a bond, one thing that, that I noticed, there's a site on Facebook, Promise Eugene Field or something, I forget the name, specific name. But, um, there was some comments on there about, and it's been, I mean, there's been a lot of good comments there, but one, they were talking about a bond at one time, and one of the gals who was on the PAC committee, one of the heads of the PAC committee last time, said what the, what the parent group from Eugene Field now, who has gotten organized, they're already further ahead for support of a bond than we were last time, two days before the election. So that was really encouraging to me. We have a, you know, if we, you know, if we vote on some of this stuff next month and we decide to put a bond on in November, there's a, there's a lot of support out there, and a big group who's ready to take on every aspect of, you know, the publicity and all the, you know, a lot of things we need to, to help get this thing passed and stuff. So that's, that's a really good thing. I mean, that's, that can go a long ways. We've already been on the news.
I think when we get to the specifics, if we do, uh, go move to Slater, um, we need pictures of it, you know? I mean, we really have a very specific plan of what that looks like, you know, that this is no longer there, that this is where the kids are, this is what we're doing with the traffic. I mean, I think those are things that parents want to hear, because Slater is not quite the same as like Robert Frost, but it is a less expensive route to go. That those specifics need to be so clear and how it's going to work and how that's going to look. I think a lot of people are visual and that it's important to
Yeah.
have it very specifically, you know, this budget's what we would want for technology, this is what we'd want for safety, and this is exactly how we're looking to make Eugene Field a greater, a safer sheikah.
I would agree. Be more specific today.
But to do that's going to take some time in our part, so.
Very much so.
Get prepared for more meetings.
Very much so, yeah, yeah. So how does everybody feel about making adoption of these recommendations from the task force an action item in our next meeting?
With a few changes.
Recommended.
What would you like to make?
Option two. I, I still think, I mean, and based off of the survey, that's what the people want as well. Like I said before, I think that people need to be happy after the sale, not just during. Yeah, so, you know.
What do you, what do you mean, based on the survey, that's what people want?
Well, if you.
You look at this, this survey?
Yeah.
Yeah?
A lot of the comments.
The comments.
Well, I was looking at the, but if you just look at the agree and strongly agree versus the disagree, you're at 76% say, seven, not 76%, 76, uh, are strongly in favor of using Eugene, or strongly or agreeing that Slater should be used as a Eugene Field site.
Well, because that was the only question.
But 55 say no.
It wasn't a question.
Okay.
But the comments reflect option two. So.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
Andy, is there any way we could, um, we could find out what, just say there's a $5 million difference between option one and option two?
That, yeah, and that's not right either. You know, we discussed this before. You got this?
Yeah.
Okay. So scenario two, he's got all the money lumped into scenario two. When we would have to do that work to Mark Twain, uh, maybe not to the extent, but we'd still have to do that for the seismic upgrades and.
Yeah, and, and I think if you remember what Zach Stokes from ZCS shared with you, that the upgrades at Mark Twain and at Robert Frost, seismic upgrades would be voluntary upgrades while they're needed, and while Mark Twain is considered one of, another high seismic risk in this district, it's not a requirement for you to seismically update, upgrade that building. You could, you can voluntarily do that. And it would cost in that range, and according to this information, this comes from the ZCS report, the 3.15 to 5.5 million dollars to seismically upgrade Mark Twain would be a pretty significant project. But when, when you, when you consider, when you consider the, the changes in the, that we've considered in the past, or, uh, because this is second or third time that, that, that sort of leapfrog effect is being considered, uh, that the, this most significant change at Mark Twain would be the addition of a covered play area, you know, some slight remodeling of the bathrooms, make them accessible for the younger, smaller kids, uh, and generally, um, you know, that's about it. And, and that could be the case here as well. So it comes down to what Wally mentioned earlier, and that's the final determination of what that scope of work would look like and what it would be.
So you were just saying that Mark, did the Mark going to be more expensive if we did all the seismic upgrades that we recommended?
Yeah, that this isn't, this four to five million isn't really a true, inaccurate.
Just based on the size.
Based on that seismic. That's what I'm saying.
Because he has, he has 1.25 to 1.75 for seismic upgrades. Is that, am I on the right line?
Yeah.
0.75 to 1 million for seismic.
Correct. Yeah, I'm sorry. I took, take a look at the total cost, right?
Yeah.
So.
And we had, what did you say on the full seismic upgrades at Mark Twain three something?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it was 2.4 to 3.4, well, 2.4 to 3.3 for a full upgrade, Tim. Uh, but the seismic upgrade was 0.75 to 1 million, just for the seismic upgrade alone. But then again, once you kick in all the seismic upgrades, you are improving a whole bunch of stuff at that point.
Like you say, those are volunteers, so those are things that.
Can I remember, was, uh, does ZCS feel confident that we would have success on a, on a seismic grant for Mark Twain?
ZCS can't confidently say that we would qualify for the seismic grant, uh, but they believe that Butte Creek and Mark Twain are the two priority projects, leaning more toward Butte Creek as a priority project simply because of the concern about the cafeteria roof. So I, I, I don't see us qualifying for a seismic grant from Mark Twain. If we qualify for the seismic grant, in my mind, it's going to be Butte Creek. And that application will be submitted sometime this summer when they become available.
Andy, could we get, and I might have already asked this, but could we get some, just say, option two is $5 million more than option one. Could we get some, um, data about how much more that is on dollars per thousand on a bond? How much more?
Yeah, yes, I, I, I can get you to sort of ballpark information on that.
Yeah, yeah, just to give us an idea. Because cost is one of the, one of the major.
Right.
Ways of driving factors.
And again, and I know you've heard this from me before, but I just have to say this, that, that when you begin talking about bonds, sales of bonds and repayment of bonds, you're talking about multiple scots, options related to schedules, uh, variables such as what percentage of your school district pays their property tax bill on time? What are the anticipated assessed values going to be and so forth? So I think we can make those assumptions, a 20-year bond, say for instance, based upon 15 million, based upon 18 million. I can share those kind of figures with you, again, with lots of, lots of assumptions.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. Other things? So when we go to, when we go to, to vote on these task force recommendations, do, do you guys feel like we need to say we're going to move Eugene Field to Slater or just use the Slater property? If there's still.
I think we need to make the determination.
I do too.
Before.
Yeah. Just so people.
Maybe that means meeting next week.
Or we can just let Andy get more information on bond costs and then discuss it on a regular session.
Well, I think that, well, I think we have one more discussion than we have time there.
And we need to know the, the true, you know, if that's actually 5 million more. I don't, I, I still am not on that. So we get that clarified.
Well, and it could be, it could be $10 million more too. I mean, it could be that you're, I think these ranges, while the range is $5 million, the way they show here, it could be that project, you know, one is a $15 million project, but project two is actually a $25 million project.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think the scope of work becomes tightening, goes down, maybe becomes more important, although we don't have tons of time to
Do that.
to do that.
There's some huge assumptions in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are. Maybe it's better, better for the simpler option.
You do what's right.
Food for thought, yeah, yeah.
I, um, if I can highlight one more thing too, I think the other thing I've, I've noticed in each one of the surveys though is being crystal clear, as you saw in some of the information tonight, but also as, as simple of, of a, of description of the project as possible. And, and that's not a reflection of the general public, rather that is just an ease of understanding.
Yeah.
Uh, and we experienced that with the last bond, and I, I contend that we experienced that with a couple of bonds in the past. There's a 2002 bond that failed, which would have leapfrogged students through the population, and I think, uh, that generally there may be some no voters simply because of the confusion that that creates. There could be some parents out there who may say, well, I, I, I want my fifth grader going to Mark Twain. I like my fifth grader going to Robert Frost. I don't want to see that change. Therefore, I may vote no. Uh, and it doesn't take a whole heck of a lot for people to vote no on a bond, I guarantee it. Uh, and so the, the simpler and the clearer that that information can be to the public, I think that's in your best interest. And whether you can, whatever, however you consider this, fortunate or unfortunate, the reality is, if there's anything going to happen in this community, it's going to have to cost less. It's going to be a simplified version of what you attempted to do, what we attempted to do in the past, and the priority project is getting students out of Eugene Field or at least addressing the needs of Eugene Field students. And so, while I'm with you, educationally, Slater Campus, it's a middle school, and it should be 50 or 75 years from now. But realistically, whether the voters will go for that or not, I don't know. I don't know. And, or whether they would support more, a picking up Eugene Field students and putting them on the Slater campus with a, 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 a new built building in the middle or a modified building in the middle that's least cost, I'll tell you, you'll have, I guarantee you, you'll have a whole bunch of happy Eugene Field folks saying, at least I'm out of that building. I think generally speaking. And I also heard from the survey results too, that if, if, whatever decision you make, if you get us out of Eugene Field, we're going to support you. I've heard that from a number of people to this point. We didn't hear that in the last bond election. So I think you're going to have support, whatever decision you make, as long as it involves taking care of Eugene Field and getting out of that place.
I would be in favor though too, if, if it is Eugene Field to Slater, of doing that construction with an eye towards sometime down, down the road. I don't know what kind of things we could do, but just, just to make a transition five, 10 years down the road.
Yeah.
Uh, easier.
I think that's, I think that's the best way to position it.
That's confusion.
Well, I don't think that we need to add confusion to it. I think that there's probably some little, little things that are, that, that we can incorporate into our design. That, that just down the road makes it an easier step. I mean, for example, one of the things that I do now in most of our houses that we construct is we, we do hallways and doors that are capable of having ADA, you know, access. It's just a little thing. It's just a little thing, uh, doesn't, it costs a whole lot to do, but it's something that if somebody transitions in life, they now don't need to do a massive remodel in order to have that access. And there's probably, I mean, just, there's probably things that you can do like that with the school.
I think a lot is by layout.
I don't know, my feeling is that if we're going to do something, it needs to be a long-term. It's hard to, it's hard to get a bond passed. If we were to put Eugene Field over here on Slater and, and 10 years, say, well, I want to build a new elementary school, I...
Well, I would plan for long-term. I mean, I would plan for it to be long-term that way.
In my mind, it's...
I would plan for a permanent change, but at the same time, maybe make a little positioning if you ever want to use the site for something else.
Yeah. Okay. Um, what do, what's, what are our feelings? Do we want another work set? This isn't a shoot. We want another work session before, before our regular session in two weeks, or do you want to wait and discuss this at our regular session and see where we go from there?
What, what new information will we have?
That's the thing, I don't, just people's, maybe another, another way to look at it is, Andy could email us some costs on bond dollars and whatever, and we can just think about it and spend a lot of time.
Yeah, can we email that to you? And, and again, I, I, I think, and, and this is just a, a reminder, maybe this sounds a little philosophical, is that what's, what's driving this decision? And if the majority of you are, are being driven by the decision to get out of Eugene Field and then have us, have us strategize or, or develop the plans for what that looks like, in my mind, that's the first portion of your, your decision. If you were to remove a, a time reference in it, which I've heard some people question, some of you question it, uh, that would not be an unreasonable consideration. You as a board can, can choose to do that. Again, these are just recommendations from the, from the task force to you for consideration. So I'd say any kind of that doctoring that you, you can reach agreement on tonight would be fine, and, and we can modify these and update them, get you some additional figures for, for costing. But, you know, specific scope of work, additional detail, maybe even clarification about what could distinguish between a difference in 5 million or not, some of that's going to take some pretty specific work, and it's also going to cost you money. And that's always a very interesting dynamic, by the way, when, when a school district pursues a bond, is at one point, do you sink a whole bunch of money into it for scope of work and architectural design and, and program management, design fees and all of that? You did a fair amount of that with your last bond, uh, and you've been a little criticized for that. I don't think it was out of reason, because quite a bit of the design work was held off to see after the bond would have passed. Had it passed, there were those, those fees incorporated into the bond, and they'll have to be this time as well. But you don't have a ton of money to go sinking into architectural fees and so forth, so you have to base this decision partially upon that philosophical or just basic understanding and belief, can we get out of Eugene Field? And here are the estimates from the professionals, the qualified people who have submitted this information to you, and, and, and we have to rely upon. That's, that's what you have at this point in time, uh, and come up with our, our best judgment of what a, a bond amount would be, and if that amount is approved by the voters, we do it in that amount. You don't have a choice, and we get it done. So my suggestion, Tim, would be, if you can give me some minor modifications to these that, that all of you can live with, or at least the majority of you can live with, then I think I can come back to you with, uh, some recommendations prepared for your consideration at the next meeting, and, and of course can send you some model information specific to, to payback options for, uh, I'll pick two or three numbers, and we can get those services done fairly quickly.
Okay. What would you guys like to modify in order to make this an action item at the next meeting?
Close Eugene Field.
Pardon?
Now that we're going to close Eugene Field, that was the one we all agreed on.
Yeah, that's what we agreed on then. So you've been by the...
If you could use the first bullet, just cross out by the 2016-17 school year, I think you have it.
Okay.
I think we can agree to that. I'm, I'm a little concerned we're going to vote on it, on something like this the next meeting and not have a high-level plan agreed to.
Yeah. I, I, I really want to see the, the bond scenario laid out. See how much, you know, I, I kind of, uh, one of the discussions I kind of thought is, that wasn't asked of the Eugene Field task force. I mean, I, I agree with all the recommendations and the desires, but one of them is can the community afford it? You know, there's so much money to pay off on that, you know, and I desire a long-term decision, but I'm afraid that our budget until that bond pays off in 2027, we don't have a long-term pool of money available to really do it, you know? And we're, we're going to have to borrow a lot of money and just pay little bits and pay interest and let it, you know, we're not going to be really attacking the principal until, you know, until we get out here. I, I think you understand my confusing question.
I, I do understand that, Tom, and, and actually, they, the, the committee, the committee had that conversation, once, possibly even twice, and, and their, their general conclusion on that is, that wasn't part of their charge, uh, and that really is ultimately up to the elected officials to scope for, to determine, can the community afford it based upon surveys and public input and what your general beliefs are about the project.
If we look, if we look at these recommendations, the first one, of course, if we take off to by the 2016-17 school year. The second bullet, consider all available district property to move Eugene Field based on economy, safety and community input. Given information available to the task force, we agree that the Slater site may be the best location for replacement. Then the third bullet, create a timeline for these actions to occur. That's, we could adopt these recommendations, say we're getting out of Eugene Field and create a timeline for these actions to occur. We could, you know, then the next month, we're going to have more specific information and, and know where we're, where we're going for sure.
Yeah, I mean, they are just recommendations.
Yeah.
It's not, but we do want to get as close as we can.
Yeah. But at least we're saying we're taking action on this Eugene Field situation and we're moving forward. And it also, the funding base, it also, um, says the committee recommended going for a bond in, in November 2014, so, so that, I mean, if we adopt that, adopt all this, that says we are going for a bond, we're closing Eugene Field, we, um, the scope of work will be decided very soon, because it'll have to be.
Well, that's what I mentioned. It's May later this week. We don't have a lot of time.
Yeah.
We have a lot of, there'd be a lot of details to figure out.
Yeah. And I think like Andy said, there needs to be a lot more work done on that before we can really...
Andy, when, when does, when would this help be in, be ready for the...
Uh, I think, I believe Marion Cami, uh, who also oversees Clackamas County, uh, takes the same information, submits it to Clackamas County, but I believe it's six, the, the resolution needs to be approved and submitted to county, counties, uh, 60 or 61 days prior to the election. So, so your, your, your formal resolution wouldn't need to occur until, until potentially late summer, Wally, uh, to, to place it on, uh, as a bond on the ballot, the, the formal action to do so.
So we have four months to work out details.
But I would want to see us have a scope, like a lot sooner, like in a month. I mean, to know where we're going.
I, I agree, I agree with you. I'm just, it's going to take time. We need to...
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, I think it's important not to, to minimize any of the work that's been done to this point as well, but you have quite a bit of work done, especially related to the Slater campus, uh, related to demolition of the middle portion, uh, the feasibility of use of the remaining portions, what some of the needs are with that as well. So we can put that into, into high gear. We have to bring all that out and revisit it, Wally, but we're not starting from, from zero, uh, at least. So we do have a, a bit of a leg up, but I agree with you 100%. There's a lot, a lot of work to do, if, if, if you were to put a bond on the November ballot.
Plus the summer.
Yes. I'm just wondering if we should be setting a date to demolish Slater Street, get that over with, and then it's pretty clear where we're going. I mean, it's got to come down one way or the other.
Yeah. Well, I guess the difference is, is that whether we include that in our bonded, in our bond and pay for it that way, or if we pay for it out of pop, out of our available funds now, that'd be the only financial difference.
Yeah, I, if I can chime in, I'm sorry. I, I don't believe that you're in a position to afford to demolish this inner portion of the Slater campus right now with the abatement, and if it may be necessary, I think you're talking in the four to five, possibly even $600,000 range in, in order to do so, based upon recent information that we've received. Unless it was to take over a, a quite a lengthy period of time, if, if a contractor could come and go on it. But the other element to keep in mind is the, the disruption to current activities that are in there, including use of the gym, electricity, plumbing, community reach school would likely be disrupted with something like that. So all of those would have to be very carefully considered in an action plan to...
Suppose we have a deal probably showing back after we've knocked that down, and we don't know what it would look like on...
I, I think it would be better suited, um, as, as a component of a plan.
Just as long as we keep it in front of people.
You can't afford it. You, you don't have the money.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Good discussion.
Yep.
Thanks. Anything else? So at least more information from Andy, we'll look at, Andy, maybe if you guys, if you could, um, make the slight modifications on the task force recommendations, and we can make those an action item at our next meeting.
I, I can do that, and I'll send some variations out there to you. Tim, can I draw your attention to one more thing, and that is the second bullet from the bottom, and that's, again, collaborate with community reach school. I don't hear anybody objecting to that by any means, but just wanted to make sure you have plenty of opportunity to have that conversation as well.
We can cross this out.
Cross whatever.
However, given information available to the task force, we agree that Slater Street site be the best location for the replacement. Is that a modification or...
Would you like to cross that out?
I would, but I don't know what the rest of, I mean, I think it just should say, um, consider all district property to move Eugene Field based on...
Economy, safety.
Yeah, and community input, and then just cross the rest of it out.
I was wondering about that too.
Yeah.
We'll modify it, but in front of you.
That's okay, we'll see.
Sure.
I mean, that leaves that door open.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we still need to...
I don't think that door can stay open a long time.
No, I was, that's what I was just going to say. I mean, that door needs to close for this, for this stuff. And that's something we need to just keep discussing in our regular session in May also, is, I mean, that's going to give everybody a couple ways to think about it a little bit more, kind of, see where we're going with it, so.
So Andy, when will we have the data we talked about tonight? Take, take you one week, two weeks, a month?
If you're talking about the Seattle Northwest data, the funding data will, I can get in a few days.
Some information Tom was looking for.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, if, and I heard a couple of you say that you'd like me to do some additional work with Dolkey, is that correct? And find, and actually share the scope of work from the structural evaluation that was done by ZCS, and ask Dolkey to give some additional perspectives on, on that from an architectural standpoint?
First, I'm okay with what we have, but if Tom's looking for apples to apples, that's what...
I would like an apples to apples, because that was kind of one of the, yes, I would.
Okay. And, and I guess I'm, I'm going to ask the board, I mean, I'm, I'm, that's going to cost, probably cost us some money, uh, because we'll bring an architect in, and we're going to have them do some significant work that, that architect has already done.
Well, that I don't want to do.
Oh, okay.
That I don't want to do. I, I assume that this work was already done once for, for BLRB to do their, what, you know, whatever information BLRB had, to work up their numbers that we provided them, can't we provide that same information?
I can provide the full BLRB report, or the, the ZCS report, which contains the BLRB information.
Yeah.
I can provide that to Dolkey, that's not a problem at all.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's, it shows everything, and, and if, if they're willing to do that for free, then, you know, I don't...
Okay, okay, so BL, I guess I, you know, I'm learning here how the process all works, you know, so that report that BLRB made cost you some money.
The report from BLRB did cost, did cost you money.
Got it, okay, okay.
Yes, and the ZCS evaluation, structural evaluation, yeah, that, that, that cost you some money.
Okay, okay.
To me, to me, to me, it's, to me, it's kind of a mute point. If we're, I think we need to focus, if we're all agreeing to the first recommendation to close Eugene Field, what's the point? I mean, I think we need to stay focused on whoever...
Well, I, I guess my, I could said there's a lot of people concerned in this community that, about money, and they want, I, I want to make sure that, that, you know, we, we got one, one group says they can do it for cheap, one group says they can do it for this much. I'd like to know if this group is, is, is lowballing me, or if this group here is saying, oh, these guys got deep pockets, I'll see if I can get them.
The issue is the scope's different.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm not, I had, I gotta educate myself a little bit more on that, because I do not want to spend any more money in the district. I assume that, I assume that, you know, I don't know if, if like a, like Dolkey will do that for nothing, just to get more, I'd like to maybe, I don't know, I've never called Dolkey, but maybe I'll make a phone call tomorrow or something. So I don't know if, I, I don't, I, I don't know where to go here. I'll just have to just end up right there. Can't really include anything.
And we do have that contact information with Dolkey, and, and again, Tom, I, I don't think it would be unreasonable. It's a public document, the document that we've shared.
Yeah.
If you were to share that with Jim Sheese, I think his name is, from Dolkey, and...
Well, Jim, is...
And I'm, I'm sorry, Andy, sorry.
You guys have both talked to Jim, you think he'd be...
I don't have a conversation. I'm amazed he's put his time into this every once in a while.
Well, we'll find out. They won't get, they won't get hung up on.
Yeah, yeah, it may be worth a conversation, Tom, just...
Yeah, okay, okay.
I'll leave it at that. I need, I need more information before I can really...
Yeah, I can, I can talk to you.
Okay, yes, yes.
Okay, anything else real quick?
Well, I'm going to push this one more time. Should we set another meeting to, we can do it after, I just want to get stuff on the calendar, because we've got a lot of work to do. Should we, should we plan on meeting the third, third Monday in May?
In May?
You're already meeting that day, because the fourth Monday is Memorial Day.
Okay, okay. Sunday. The last Monday?
Well, it'd be the last Tuesday. You can meet the Tuesday after Memorial Day, I suppose. But you've already moved your meeting from that Memorial Day to, to the Monday prior.
Why don't we see where we're at in our regular session?
We're going to run out of time.
If we have one, if we have a work session the third Monday in May, we can see where we're at.
Okay.
We could always start one in the first edition.
Of course, there's scratchy issues.
Okay. So we're going to move along to our, our added, um, discussion item, fiscal and accounting recording. I just have some, ten questions I'm going to ask Scott.
And Tim, those questions are both to Scott and me.
Okay. Scott's already given the answers, but I'm going to have you. I'm going to have you say it publicly anyway. And Andy, you also.
Yes, right.
Are the books balanced and reconciled?
They are.
Yes.
Does the adopted budget reflect expected expenditures?
It does.
Yes.
Are all payroll reports filed, and have all payroll liabilities been paid timely?
Yes, they have.
Have all federal and state grant reimbursement requests, as well as required financial reporting forms, been timely filed?
Yes, as, that's my knowledge. We keep, we have a process that, that Jan manages those currently, and she reports to me on a regular basis as the ones that she's done, so.
And yes, I agree to that as well, Tim. We, we have had some delay in reimbursement from Medicaid funding that we're, we're working on, and we know it's the, checks in the mail, so to speak, but there's been, there's been a delay on that, that we're not uncertain why that delay is occurring.
Okay, but it isn't because of us.
It's not because of us.